That's like wings, not like.
I know, but it is, it's art, it is, it truly is. But don't do what my mother did, we went to a baby shower, she was giving me a great, great grandma. So they had us wish little ones who could be made up and said, great, great grandma. Well, if this was in there, it's still wrapped up in Saran Wrap, just deteriorating in her fridge.
She was at OHS.
My mom, she wouldn't eat it. Okay, that's a hard one.
Should be giving away our trade secrets. I better turn my phone off.
All right, good evening, everyone, we are going to go ahead and get started tonight. Welcome to the January twenty seventh, twenty twenty Board of Education meeting. We will call this meeting to order with seven board members present, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes seven oh, and we are on to consent agenda, Dr. Cobb's anything?
Now, one of the things I just did want to address in here, if you look at the donations for the robotics team, I think it just speaks volumes to what Mrs. Steinpaas is doing at OHS. And you look at the names that are on there, NASA for one, but there's almost twenty thousand dollars worth of donations that she's taken in since the beginning of the year for this program. She's, she's an incredible teacher and has done incredible things for our students. I think it's worth mentioning in here, the amount of work that she puts in for our kids at OHS.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes seven oh. We do not have any comments from the public this evening, so we will go down to section five point oh one. OEA will present board certificates for appreciation. Welcome.
Hi. Good evening, glad to be here tonight and thank you, Dr. Cobb's, for inviting us to be here. I'm Megan O'Neil, I'm OEA president, and I have our lead negotiator, Teresa Roberts, joining me this evening. We just wanted to say thank you so much for everything that you do for our community and for our schools, and it's a privilege to get to work with you, both at board meetings and on the negotiations team. And it's, it's enjoyable to see that you are devoted to our community and the improvement of schools. So, thank you so much, I have your certificates, I'll deliver them to you, so you do not have to get up, or I could make Teresa. Thank you, Julie, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
I'll help out. Chris, thank you.
Uh huh, thank you. You're welcome.
And Melidia, we're really excited to have you, both on the board and on our negotiations team. Carol, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Susan.
Thank you guys, how are you, it's good to you.
And Linda.
Thank you.
And I am going to put in a shameless plug for Wax. So, we hope to see you all there, and I know that many of you attend all of the great events in our community, so thank you then for attending all of those wonderful things, Shanda, we hope to see you specifically as our Lincoln rep. So, thanks again, have a good evening.
Thank you, thanks very much.
Melidia will be your Lincoln rep, so you'll see Melidia there.
It's new, it's new.
It's new. For Melidia. It's a real possibility that I put it in there wrong, but Melidia will be our rep.
All right, we are going to move on to section five point oh two, we have an OHS student presentation, Mrs. Whitaker and some OHS students are going to present about the IT services in the Genius Bar. Welcome.
They're excited to be here, we were dropping like flies today because all of my students are busy and getting pulled into four hundred different directions, and so we're lucky to have the two of these students here. They represent two of our pathways, one is in the informational technology cluster, and it's the information support and services pathway, which in essence is them training to be a part of our Genius Bar and ultimately be the tech aides at the high school. The other piece that we will be talking about as well that's in the presentation is the art, AV, and communication cluster, and that's our graphic design pathway. And so we're really excited to have these students here, I'm going to let them introduce themselves, and then we'll get started on the presentation that they put together.
All right, hi, everyone, my name is Nathaniel and this is my buddy Cole. We both work for the OHS IT service tech team, Genius Bar, as we call it, unpaid technicians for the OHS district. So yeah, starting on our first slide.
You're hitting the laser.
All right, thank you. All right, so what are we all about? So, the tech team, we work with students and teachers across OHS with problems ranging from simple Chromebook repairs to loners for students, as well as working with teachers for problems that might be software issues or fixing projectors. So we do everything, we run around constantly, making, working to make sure that our school is staying up to date with technology, as well as, we're making sure that the class is providing a way for us to learn IT in ways that we didn't know before. It's expanding our knowledge and we're learning things that are going to help us in the workforce going into IT. So it's a very special thing to be a part of. All right, so our services, like I said, we have a lot of new students that come to OHS, we have a lot of new students that also leave, so every time a new student comes in, we have to make sure that the numbers are documented, so we don't have any numbers. Or people that are being left unattended, we know everything that is happening, and we're issuing new Chromebooks to students on the go all the time. When students are leaving the district, we're making sure that we're getting them documented as well, so it's all in the books. We're saying the Chromebooks and making sure they're, or power washed, we call it it, so everything's off and all the district stuff is on, so we put it back in inventory, everything's ready to go for a new student that's coming in, and everything's kept on lock. Like I said, we do minor issues with Chromebooks all the time, so say a student comes up, Chromebook won't charge. We replace the battery form, very easy kind of stuff, we don't charge for batteries, we don't charge for mice either, so we always are, batteries and mice are a common thing to do, but we also have a lot of students that maybe dropped their screen or something, so we have screens that broke, that'll break, we have to replace. With those kind of issues, we have tickets that we have to fill out, give to the office, make sure it's all paid for. And when we fix Chromebook repairs, we give out loners to students and make sure that they have a Chromebook while their Chromebook is being repaired by us, but when it's repaired, we find them in Skyward and we make sure we deliver it as quickly as possible.
Yeah, so here's some examples of what we do around the Genius Bar. So multiple of them are just us fixing projectors and Chromebooks, salvaging them for extra parts so that if we're fixing Chromebooks, we have parts to fix them. Another one is checking the help desk tickets for like teachers, they'll put in tickets so that if they need projectors fixed or their computers broken, we can just go in and help them. That's really it. And here's just some statistics of how many tickets we do over the semester.
Grade, and then if whether it's a loaner, you can see loners, the number one thing that the kids deal with on a daily basis, and a lot of that heavy work is first period typically, sometimes second or third period if students realize, oh, I needed a Chromebook today, then they'll go get one from these guys, so that's a pretty popular area. Our graphic design students were, they were not able to be here, part of the reason we wanted to highlight, Dean, if you go to the next slide, some of what they do is, a lot of their work, I try to help them understand that it's really under the cover because they're always constantly designing things, not only for Ottawa High School, before, I know Austin has sent over stuff from Lincoln before, they've done stuff for Mrs. Schaefer at Garfield, and they are constantly designing our graduation book every year, different posters that are going to go out recently, we've had them, anytime we're having a big event, we'll ask the students, like the ribbon cutting graphic that came out, we had students that designed that. We have a parent information meeting Wednesday evening for seniors, and then for incoming freshmen, we had students that designed that. I think one of their favorite shirts they've most recently made is their Ottawa High School forensic shirt with Mrs. Flax's face there. That was one they had, they said they had to put on there, they're very proud of that work. The home, where you see the little sunflower, that is some of the work that they're starting to do with their new laser printer. Mrs. Fisher is out sick right now, and so the students are anxiously awaiting her return. She was trained with that machine, our sub doesn't feel super competent with it, neither do Mrs. Howard and I, so we've been doing some things, dabbling with it, but we're anxious for her to come back so the students can kind of jump in and see all the possibilities there, and so this is just a lot of the work that those students do, and I sometimes, I think people don't realize all of what they do design around our district. They do the buttons that the students wear, they do all of the senior posters, they design those. The other cool thing that those students do is not only do they do the design, but then they have to carry it out, whether that is getting the invoice and the order down to front row sports or down to ditties, and then they work with them to pick up the orders and bring them back to the high school, and they're responsible for all of that. So it's another great program that just allows our students to have some unique experiences to take with them in the future. So we're really excited, very proud of both of these students, Nathan's a senior, so he's leaving us, Nathaniel is, but Cole will be with us next year, he's a junior, so we'll have some experience in the, at the Genius Bar next year, so. Do you guys have any questions for the students about the things they do?
How many is there of you guys that?
It's around like eight or nine, right? I'd say around eight or nine of us.
That's still a big workload for what, seven, eight hundred students?
Yeah, we're all split up like in between different hours for different work services.
Yeah, I know, I'm just, I'm giving you kudos, that's for A people to keep up with seven, eight hundred electronic devices plus the teachers. I can only imagine how much this helps Dean out.
And then we're always throwing projects at them too, right, like we can design a new invoice and ticket system for when we have students with broken devices, and so they're all working on that as well. So on top of all the things they do with the students and teachers, we're always kind of throwing assignments and things at them as well to kind of help the organization and the management of it, very much student-led, and giving them that autonomy to make it work, and they're kind of what, between teachers and a negotiator at times, because they go in and they repair the computers.
I think it's, I think it's great, I mean, it, it's ownership in their school and.
There's a lot of learning that happens in your freshman year.
Is this the second year of the Genius Bar, or is it?
I believe so, because it wasn't, right, yes, because it was not prior to the construction, and so now we've got it going. And I'd say this year's been, last year we kind of just flew with it a lot of times, and now we're really learning. From a lot of merch sakes, Mrs. Fisher being gone has forced us all to learn even more because she's got a lot of knowledge in her head that the rest of us didn't have, and so we've had a little growing pains this year, but I think all in all, we're confident that it's going to continue to grow, and just again, great set of skills that these students are on.
One of the things that, if any of you went to the legislative coffee this weekend at City Hall, Senator Tyson made mention that she was disappointed in schools across the state of Kansas for their lack of IT programming. And I was somewhat frustrated that the senator for our area had failed to understand what we do within the IT departments and the graphic design departments at Ottawa High School. And so, again, I want to say thank you to both of you guys for, for really propping up this program and what we do, and for Dean, for all the help that he does with it. One of these days, one of these two kids will be the next Dean Grell, sitting here for USD two ninety, so we appreciate that very much, and I would challenge and I will challenge Senator Tyson to come and watch what we do on any given day, to see how incredible our program is.
I think it's a great hidden gem.
Really, this is why I selected this pathway to come, because like I said, they do so much, and I don't think the general population always realizes everything that these students do every day to help us with the technology within the building. Thank you very much for letting us come and present.
Thank you both.
Thank you gentlemen.
Thank you so much, thanks. Okay, so that leads us to our next part of the evening, which Mr. Grell is going to take us through the new web, website and Thrill Share and what kinds of tech information.
I'm going to deviate from the normal and give you a seated presentation so I can drive the website. I'm going to start, go ahead, Kelly is going to post while sitting over there to her website, to Facebook and to Twitter about what just occurred, I think.
Um, messaging.
There you go, just to show how easy it is for us to be connected now to our website and to everyone in our community. All of our administrators will have the capability from their phones to push out these alerts. And real quick, before I go to the website, I'll show you this Thrill Share kind of platform and what it can do. If I come to our platform and go to our live feed, I'm not going to do this live, but you can see as I start offering a message, let's say I want to send it to Facebook, Twitter, our live feed, which I'll explain in a second. This is a push notification, which I'll explain in a second as well, and then a text message to every person's phone number that's in our system, and a voice call that you have all probably heard with our snow day alerts. We can then type the message in here, hey, there's a snow day, I hit enter, it goes to all of those, and I walk away.
Would you go ahead and type that in, show us how that works? That's what I'm saying.
It's dangerous, so there are levels of approval here that we can control. Myself and a few others, Dr. Cobb's is one, he doesn't know this yet, but he has what's called super admin, and he can post to every single page, so right now we're looking at just the district page. I'm posting to the district Facebook, to the district Twitter, to the district live feed, to the district patrons. Dr. Cobb's can click a button, we might take this away from him, I don't know yet, but he could.
There's a system of checks and balances that needs to exist here.
He can post with one button to Garfield's Facebook, Lincoln's Facebook, everywhere, everywhere at one time. So incredibly, incredibly powerful, I can add photos on here, we've been using it lately for all of our PAC certification announcements. Kelly's been using it quite a bit, we have not done a lot of training, so there's not a lot from all of the schools. Kelly just kind of clicked because I was in her office, she said, teach me how to do this right now, I think she's doing it. As I hop over to her site. One day ago, so it's on its way. This section right here is the live feed that I was showing you that we can post to on us in Thrill Share, so a live feed option. And literally all it is, is it throws it on our website. This is also, this exact message was sent to Twitter and was sent to Facebook, but it's just one spot to put it all in, to send it to all these places. The hope is, in the near future, that our kids will have the ability to post articles to the news section, and again, there are, there's a hierarchical method, there's levels of approval. So the business teacher approves it, Mrs. Whitaker approves it, then it shows up on the page. We want, go ahead, you ready? I refreshed the page, less than a minute ago, here's Kelly's post, I could pull up Facebook right now and show you that as well, but I don't want to. It's on Twitter, it's on Facebook, it's out there everywhere. The last piece that we talked about was the notifications, so on the actual app, on everyone's phone, if they wanted to download it, they sure can, down here at the bottom, it's in the Apple App Store and the Android App Store. You download the app, and then you can actually subscribe to notifications, you are in control of your notifications. So you can say, I have a kid at the middle school and I have a kid at the high school, check mark, check mark, and you'll get these push notifications right here when that school posts them. So if the middle school posts and says, hey, we have this going on tonight, be sure to be here, park in this certain section, they click post and they click that, or the push notification, the phone then has an alert, like when you see your weather alert where it pops down from the top of the screen and says, hey, there's what's going on right now. That's that instant live information transfer, as long as they have the app on their phone. Really neat option we didn't have before, the rest of it, we kind of had, just six different platforms to go to to send one message. So incredibly powerful, just this page right here, this is one piece, this is one component we're going to show you tonight, but this is arguably the reason we did this, is because of the power in this platform and being able to send everything everywhere with just a couple clicks. Yes?
What about, you talk about Facebook and live feed, can we, live feed our meetings, can you set up?
A whole different topic, yes, we can. So the live feed up here is just, again, it's just this part over here, it's called a live feed, and it's just a feed of live information, and it's not really live, it just sits there and updates as you reload the page. So you'll see Kelly's posted on here two days ago, one day ago, less than a minute ago. We expect when this is up and running, and this is, this is in its infancy at USD two ninety right now, but when this is up and running, we'll have posts all throughout the day. The actual live feed, like live video, we cannot host on this page, this page is all static, it's dynamic content, but it's not meant to be like live videos. So as far as that's concerned, like live streaming meetings, we've had that discussion before here, the big hurdle for us is complacency with ADA laws. And ADA laws require us to have live transcription and closed captioning.
What about Facebook?
Facebook has the same thing, so it's a, it's a law that governs any broadcast from the school district out. So when we have our YouTube videos of our meetings like right now, tomorrow this will be up, YouTube after the fact transcribes it for us and gives us automatic captioning. There have been schools that have gotten in trouble for the automatic captioning, because people that speak sometimes, or me away from the mic here, the mic might pick up different words, and they're inappropriate words sometimes. There were some examples in an article we read that were extremely inappropriate, that came with their automatic captions. And the school got in trouble, even though they had the captions and satisfied the requirement, they weren't accurate captions.
Okay, so.
They did a service to the people that don't, that can't consume that information in that method.
Interesting.
So what we, we're in talks with, I believe, the city and county both do, go ahead.
So I've reached out to both the city and the county, the county does not do it, they do it in the same manner that we do it. City does have an option to do so, the encoder that they purchased was five thousand dollars eight years ago. Who knows what it would cost now, they also pay a hundred and thirty dollars an hour for a fee, for a company out of Lawrence to sit there and transpose their meetings as they're happening live. So depending on how we would want to spend our money here, those things would have to take place in order for us to be able to do a live feed of these types of meetings.
But right now, we're getting posted by the following day.
Yeah.
So that's a, that's a new development, I won't be the first to tell you, it's been kind of lax lately. We had a person leave our department and I was tasked with it, which, that was because I tasked myself with it, so it's been kind of late. But now, it'll be here tomorrow morning, I promise you, so we will get that going. Again, YouTube does the automatic transcription for us, we're still probably, we have the option to review transcriptions, so we can just sit there and read them all, make sure they're all correct, and correct them after the fact, if they're not correct. There are, there are companies out there, I'll say lawyer entities, that look around for these kind of issues in an ambulance chaser fashion, and try to find these issues. They do websites now too, so our new website, we have an ADA compliance piece that we have to caption every single image. So you don't see any captions here, but if you hover on the image, you should have a description of every single image on our website. And sometimes it's not on the hover, it's on the actual code behind it, but then a screen reader or a read aloud device can see that image and tell you, this is an image of a kid, two kids with gloves on, is what it would tell you. If you go to Facebook right now and your page doesn't load, Facebook guesses what's in your images and puts a caption on all of them. So it'll say, there's a truck in front of a tree and there's a guy in the driver's seat, and it's really creepy, and it's computers determining what's in the picture. So this is all required by law. So when we load a picture up to the website right now, and you click save, it says, whoop, you didn't put a caption, you have to put a caption. And you have to add a caption and say what that image is, and again, this is to comply with those ADA laws, so.
Okay.
A good thing about that is this new platform, we have to train them to do that, they can't put a picture up without a description, so. Be aware of that, it does exist, the streaming, we're still going to investigate some more, I'm sure we'll look into it a little bit more. I don't know where we're going to go with that.
Okay.
Any other questions? I'll keep going though. So this is the high school level site, each site's accessible from this top corner. We did have a request to add Eugene on here, Engage, so we'll have to check into how we can do that, whether it's going to be its own individual site or nested under the high school. Mainly because we just did this and the contract just got signed, I don't know how we would add a whole nother one, but we can certainly start talking about that. The benefit there would be then that we'd have separate calling lists too, which I think we can still do, but we'll get into that, that's a whole nother discussion. The, the voice call, we are not using yet, right now we have two systems that do our voice call, we don't want to switch over in the middle of weather. So we have periods where we don't know what's going to happen tomorrow or the next day or next week. So we have both systems running concurrently, they're both under contract, and when our first system expires, I think it was a six-month overlap, when that expires, we'll go right to this and do this all the time. So our transition period is probably going to be next month for this, for the voice call piece, just because we don't want to have issues with a snow day. No one wants to have issues, but us having the wrong phone number, it's going to call your house phone or your cell phone or text you or whatever. Other things that are over here, this entire Thrill Share piece controls our website as well, so we have our news items. You'll see there's a little pin here, so we can pin something that always stays on the front of the page, and all of the news items staying here in chronological order. And again, this is what our students would post with this waiting for approval option, we also have scheduled posts, so I know Kelly has talked about them, I don't know if you're doing it yet, but actually scheduled stuff to go out tomorrow and just. So instead of having to post something right at noon tomorrow, she can do it right now, and it just does it for you while you're at a meeting or doing something else completely separate. We also have events which are not synced yet, but we're working on getting all of our calendars for the first time in school history on the same page, which will be really nice. And I say all of our calendars, I already misspoke, our athletics calendar is an entirely separate entity that is going to be a challenge. We're working to try to find a solution to that, I don't know what the solution to that is yet, but the Frontier League actually maintains a calendar that we send information to, as I understand, and we cannot pull that information back out easily, we can do it, but every time there's an update, we have to manually update from then on, which we don't want to do, because this time of year, there's a lot of updates. So we're going to find a way to get these all synchronized, I think all the schools share the same problem. Right now, we just link and say activities, and you go to a third-party website, which is what every school district does right now in the Frontier League. Hopefully that challenge will be overcome soon. But right now, like we put in some manual stuff, we put in recurring event for USD two ninety Board of Education meetings, which again, is a perfect example, this is not always the schedule. So sometimes we'll have something that falls out of the schedule because of an unforeseen event, or December, we decide we're not going to have two meetings because of December. So we will tackle that as we see it. There's a staff section that just lists our staff, we upload that from Skyward directly, and it's a manual load, so when we have turnover in staff, we come in here, click the staff button, upload them, and we're going to go. There is a, there will be provisions for staff to have teacher pages, I don't think we're going to use that because we've pushed all of our teachers to use their own Google sites. The benefit of Google sites being, they are one hundred percent in complete control of the message they want to put out there, and if we did with staff teacher pages, we are in control of that, and they go through us to make those changes. Now, arguably, that might be an okay thing, but I don't want to do all those changes. There's a documents page as well, the neat thing about the documents is that this exists in the app as its own page. So as you have the app on your phone, there's a button in the corner, you tap and you say documents, and you have all of our staff docu, or all of our district-level documents right here. They're kind of broken down into different folders, there's parent info, and you'll be into enrollment. The great thing about this though, is that all of our website links to these documents, so if we have an enrollment page and say, hey, go to this document, go to this document, make sure you have this, here's school supply lists. Now we just come to this page and just drag the files in there, overwrite the current files, and we're done. Whereas before, we'd have to upload all the new files, delete all the old ones, update all the links between them, it's a whole lot of work. And in saying that, we still have a whole lot of work ahead of us, we had over five hundred documents district-wide to update, so we're still kind of working through that backlog, we've got the important ones, what we deemed important, but there's still more stuff to catch up on, I know for sure, like Lincoln's newsletters, we had all the way back to two thousand fifteen, I think we have newsletters, so we're still getting all those linked in there. So the current ones are up there, two thousand fifteen, we'll get there, we'll get that when we need to. So bulletin board is just a place, and everything that you see here, our administrators can do for their site only. So I have this dropdown, and I can go between all of these, but as Kelly gets in her, she has Ottawa High School, and that's it. And when she's on the high school, she has the bulletin board that I just showed you, which lets her manipulate this part right here, which we set to all of the school's missions, thinking that was appropriate, but I'm sure they'll use that throughout the year for different things, different announcements. Call to actions, just giant spot where on the website they can say, hey, don't forget to, whatever, sign up for this, X, Y, and Z. The gallery itself is just that slideshow at the top. All of our gallery items, all of the students in the gallery have to have our social media sign off, our copa forms, that says we're allowed to use their image or likeness on our website. So as you go to some of these sites, you'll see kids that have emojis over their faces, just because their parent hasn't signed that disclosure yet. We've had questions about that, why does that kid have an emoji on his face, that's a privacy concern, so. And finally, is the inbox, there is a forum, or a forum module that people can submit information, submit questions. It existed on our last website, we rarely used it, and when people did use it, the questions came in, and people said, is this real or is this fake? Because I've created a monster in teaching them to question every email that reaches their inbox. So this can handle all of that, I don't think we'll use this that much, because we do have teacher emails on the website, but I'm sure, as Kelly's looking at this, she's probably thinking, yes, I have an idea for a forum. We currently have like our anonymous tip-off forum, our bully report forum, that exist in Google Docs that can probably go on here, just because there is an inbox way to track them as opposed to the way Google does it, which is kind of a little silly. Alerts, and we're not going too far into data, so I can do this. This is all of our information, our call lists, that we load from our student information system every morning at two o'clock in the morning. So you'll see we have it split up into OLC families, OMS families, each building, we also have an all families and an all staff, and then some testing. And this is all for the, like the snow day alerts, or the, you know. And this is all for the, like the snow day alerts or the, you know, there's a water main break alert, whatever we would have to do. We can do that with a click of a button in here and we can delegate who has control of these lists. No one beyond the district level can edit these lists because they are synchronized every night at two o'clock or every morning at two o'clock. But we can delegate, we can say OLC and OHS, go to Kelly. She can click both of those buttons and send a message to them with one click. You also see there's analytics that we can see after the fact. I'm not going to click on it because it will have people's information on it. But it will say Dean Grail answered the phone, or Dean Grails went to voicemail, or Dean Grail just rang and rang and rang and rang, no answer. It'll also tell you if they read the, or if they received the text or if they received the push notification on their app. We have it come up every once in a while where someone says, I never got the call. We have data that says we gave them the call, but we can't have a proof. I mean, it's computers, computers can be wrong. But we have information that shows this is the number we called, this is the time we called, we can verify with them. And it's oftentimes a wrong number, like, oh, that's a two instead of a one. We fix it that way. But having that data is certainly powerful. And then the last piece, because this is our website, there is a content management system where we can come in and fully edit every single page on our website. We can add pages willy nilly, we can add links that go external. You'll see there's a hierarchy here that we can completely manipulate. And part of the problem that we had from our old system to our new system is the way they organize data. And they had literally two separate menus on every single website. So our old website had a side menu and then a top menu and they were completely different. When they migrated, we had doubled up everywhere. So we're still fixing through some of that. Again, we have the, the main hierarchy done. You'll still find some dead links. But when we go to like the district level and we go to our employee resources and hit like our USD two ninety employee forums, every single one of these, we have to link and update. These are all links and they're all PDFs and that's not even a lot. I think the benefits one is probably twice this. So it's a whole bunch of information to move across and unfortunately, it wasn't included in the migration. That was kind of a, hey, we'll get the, we'll get the layout for you, we'll get all the pages for you, but the content itself, we have to move, so. Any questions? That was a lot. We did have a complaint this morning about, let me go up here to the district site and see if we fixed it yet. There's no dining option here. We had patrons familiar with going to the district site, clicking the dining button and going to see our OPA menus. And the reason that Aptige doesn't do that, Aptige's the provider, is because they set up for all districts and not all districts use OPA like we do. So OPA for us, we click a button, we go to their website, then we click the school we want to go into. A lot of other districts have a option where the dining page is unique, the link is unique to their school. So they click on Garfield, they click on dining, it takes them right to that page, they're looking at Garfield's menu. So ours has that extra step in the middle and we can't, we can't get around that. So a button here at the root of the Ottawa High School menu, or Ottawa district menu, is coming because we have people that are used to going to that button, they're just clicking right here. Any other questions?
Will parents, will parents still need the Skyward app or will this?
Yes, the Skyward app will be how they'll get all the student information, the attendance information, all that sort of information. This is strictly just the district communication piece. No one needs the app. The app's kind of just an added benefit. And I encourage you all to get the app and see how it works and really the subscribing to the alerts and being in control of that. If you say, hey, this is too many alerts, you should click the button off. Or if your kid moves from Garfield to the middle school, you just toggle it to the next one and you get those alerts now. But there's, there's no requirement to have the app. I wish we could see, we will eventually, I guess, see the adaptability or how many people have actually used the app. But the Skyward app and this are completely separate and have separate roles entirely. There's not a way to bridge that gap that I know of. We still have some issues that we'll have to work through with notifications because this platform will become a notification platform. So when you get the, the attendance reports or the low lunch balances, all of that will be going through this platform soon beyond just the alerts like snow day and water main break or whatever.
So did you say this is, when I type it into the Play Store, is it the mobile?
Ottawa USD two ninety.
Into the Play Store?
Yeah.
Okay.
And if not, there actually is a link down here, I'll see what it's called.
So I, I just have one more question.
Yeah.
So like in Skyward, for example, if the band director sends a message in there saying, there's this concert, you don't get a notification for that. So you don't see it unless you go in there and check it. So will, will this replace that? So that is where he would send the message?
The teacher discretion. I think this is more of an admin level push alerts, but the admin can certainly push those alerts. We would have to load class list, which we certainly can, and say, this is all the band kids, this is all of the music kids, choir vocal. But we don't have that yet. That's something we could go over the lists and I'm not sure. There's a whole confusion that exists between Skyward and School Messenger. And we have Skyward as our student information system and School Messenger is what sends the alerts. But there's a tying piece inside of Skyward called Skylert that is maintained inside Skyward, but it's actually using School Messenger to send messages out. So it's really, really confusing how they all tie together. And I believe our staff uses Skylert right now. The information center.
Yes, yeah, the information center inside Skyward.
So I think that piece stays. We're still digging through this. We're talking to Gardner because Gardner has done this. They did it right before we did and they went from Skyward, Skylert and School Messenger to completely Aptige. So they are one hundred percent on Aptige and they're doing all their notifications, all their staff notifications, all of their, they, well, Spring Hill has down to their bus route. So if they have a bus route thirteen, they have all those kids in the list that they load every night. So if there's an emergency, they click a button and send an alert to bus thirteen parents. Which is where we would like to get, but that's a lot of work. That's a lot of work. But I certainly see the, the benefit of it. Good question. Did I answer it?
I think.
Okay.
I'm, I'm just in hopes that, like that little glitch of how, if parents don't go in there and actually check, like, did I get a message? You know, that they will be getting, not missing that.
We have some more research on our side to do on that because I'm not sure exactly how, what the disconnect or what the connection is between School Messenger and Skylert. Because School Messenger's going away, Skylert will still exist, but parts of Skylert go away, but not all of them.
Right.
Really confusing.
I really like the, the push notifications on this.
That would be really handy, as will the voice call all be on the same platform. I don't believe the SMS will be used that much because you are then encroaching on everyone's data plan. So if you send an SMS, you're charging them a nickel or a quarter or whatever it is. I don't even know what an SMS costs without a plan. But if they don't have a plan or if they have a phone with minutes, sending them that data takes those minutes. We can't, that I have seen yet, we cannot feasibly have an opt in, opt out of the SMS. You just click the button and send. Whereas everything else on there, we can have an opt in, opt out list. We can say, here's your phone number, we're going to call. If you want to change it in the office, we'll change it. If you want to remove it, we'll remove it. But the SMS is either all or none. So I don't think, and we've been telling all of our administrators, steer clear of the SMS. I don't think we're going to use that yet. We may in the future if we can find an opt in, opt out because I wouldn't want someone encroaching on my phone. Whereas like the notifications on this, you're downloading the app, you're signing up for it, you're clicking the notifications, you're in complete control of it. We want, we want to be upfront about that. There are some screenshots of the app. I didn't have a good way to show this to you without.
I found it.
Up here on the right is your organization tab. You click this, then you can see the list of schools that you could, that subscribe to. On the left is your navigation tab, which I think is shown right here. So you can get the live feed, you can get to the news feed, see the current events, staff documents, notifications and settings. On the high school, there's also an athletics tab here and it will do two things. One thing is it will do a calendar, which we do not have integrated yet. The second thing is if there's someone at the event, let's say Kelly is at a high school basketball game, she can put the game on there and she can update the score. And say, end of the third quarter, here's the score, you know, and just put it out there live. Next tab shows us, just as you scroll through the live feed, what you would see. There's your documents before we got to it and cleaned it all up because that's what it was before. You had a staff info and an employee resources, which is the same thing. Any other questions? We have not used the Apple app yet. I have not even seen it. I do know when you click the Ottawa USD two ninety app in the App Store and you download it on your Android phone and you install it, it says, this app wants to manage your phone calls. Which I didn't want to click, so we talked to Aptige and says, is this incorrect? And they said, that's the way the notification, the push notification works. They use the same underlying code in the background that that's the notification Android tells you. So we'll have questions about it, but you can always just click deny and not accept that. It will push information out. We have marketing materials to push out. They're not done yet from Aptige that we will then disperse to schools and say, hey, here's our new website. We would like to get some more content on there, which I'll be working on later in this week, working with admins to get more information out there. And the last thing I want to show you is down here at the bottom. These two buttons are, actually the bottom one is mandated by the state. It's a brand new accountability reports. It's in the footer of every single webpage. You click on it, it takes you to KSDE website that is required for every district to have from here on out. So those are all in the bottom footer down here. This is your building report card and right now we're on the district site, so it's the district report card from KSDE. Wonderful. Live information, live information, big project.
I would say that just as a reminder to the board, reason that this migration is happening is this is one of the things that we, that we talked about over the summer that we need to improve upon and how we disseminate information to our community and that our website was not very good and that we were struggling with social media platforms between all building levels. So this was a huge step in the right direction. There's still a lot of work to be done. But ultimately, that's the reason why we're seeing this migration to a different web, web platform.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing that with us.
A lot of everyone's work.
Okay, next up, we have five point oh four Eugene Field Vision. Mrs. Briggs and Mrs. Whitaker are going to present about Eugene Field and its programs there. Welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thanks for having us. Before Mrs. Briggs gets started, one thing I want to say is just recognize all of the work that Mrs. Briggs and her staff has done throughout this year. And it is a little plug for our Early Release Fridays. That has allowed us, I know Mrs. Roberts is in the audience and she is over at JDC and she works with some of our students. And it was often difficult to connect her to the appropriate PD and to get her around teachers that she needed to collaborate with. And so those Fridays have really allowed that staff not only to spend time together, to talk about all of the things that Ivy's going to present about, but it has also allowed us to get them connected back to the elementary schools, back to the middle school, or over to the high school to feel connected in a part of what we're doing because they are providing our students with an education just as much as all of our teachers in our general, general buildings. And it's important for them to have that PD and that knowledge when they're reaching those students. And so they've done tremendous work and we're really excited about the things that are going on at Eugene Field and kind of where we are headed here in the future. So I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Briggs to talk in a little bit more detail about where we are and kind of the direction that we hope to head.
Thank you. Yeah, we appreciate all the support we get from the other schools. I know that's been a big piece this year is reaching out and building those connections. And then a plug to the graphic design class, they did design our new logo and that was where we started. Really felt like the first thing we had all, we have all these programs that had existed kind of in silos and they were all functioning and doing what they needed to do, but not interacting. And so we had a lot of outliers and people were just kind of on their own and bringing it together so we felt more like a team. As a building was one of the things we started with, we came up with our motto, or our motto, sorry, our mission. It feels like a motto sometimes, creating new beginnings piece. And our staff really felt strongly that that's what we do in that building is we provide those opportunities for students who maybe haven't succeeded or have some barriers to come somewhere and feel like they get a new start and that they can be successful and then move forward and not just be stuck in one place either. So we built that, the mission, and then the logo just came into place along with it. And we did a lot of nice interacting with that graphic design team with feedback to come up with what we have. So, you know, our goal is to, and it ties right into the district's mission, which is to build those knowledge, the skills and the behavior for life sustaining employment. We want to help our students become potentially strong community members. And a lot of our students do remain here in Ottawa, so that's real important. Dean, are you scrolling for me?
It'll work right if you click the button on the right, not the button at the top. There you go.
Our tech team was just pointing the laser around and they're like, gee, they're pointing right in the eye.
They got that in there.
My glasses.
Dr. Cobb's asked me to talk about our vision going forward as a team, but I felt like we needed to highlight some of the things that have already happened this year in Eugene Field. We really have increased our direct instruction in a wide variety of areas. JDC as well as Engage has some direct instruction occurring as well as Plato based instruction. At Engage, we really have emphasized trying to build in more interaction and activities. For students who struggle in a classroom, to be asked to sit on a computer all day can be quite a struggle in and of itself. So increasing that engagement, doing things that hold their attention, that interaction with teachers has been huge. We've seen a real positive response to that with our students. We also have encouraged and built in some more transitions. So we have students who are ready to take classes at the high school, maybe not all day, that's a lot for them. And so we've worked together to come up with what mix that is. Right now, we have four Engage students that are enrolled in classes at OHS and they are enrolled in a total of six classes and they're all passing, they start at semester. So we're at a hundred percent right now and we're pleased with that. And they work hard, they're excited and they are, they pretty much always leave with a smile on their face and those who return to us come back smiling. So they enjoy it and they talk about what they're doing at the high school, which hopefully will encourage other students to join in. We have some students who looked at transitioning elementary. Right now, my middle schoolers are saying they're not ready for that, but they do talk about when they start taking classes. So it is something students are considering. So it's not just a terminal placement where they think they're stuck there forever. We want them to see that they're welcome back and Ms. Whitaker and her staff have done a wonderful job of welcoming our students who do come over and helping them feel like they can do that in a comfortable way and be who they are and still come back to Engage with support. Or we have OLC students as well that are traveling over for some of their classes, which the CTE piece of that is huge for those students. What else up there is? We have brought Stella's Tharp in to work with our teachers quite a bit and are beginning to look at how that career counselor can help support students at OLC and Engage specifically right now. And then there have been some building wide activities. We did a Thanksgiving meal weekly. There's recycling, which the students in Eugene Field in the different programs will coordinate and make sure that recycling's ready. And our adults program actually gathers that and delivers it and sorts it. So it's just kind of a building effort to do something together. And then we are in the process of planning an end of year activity, which would also be an outgoing activity for those students this year. It's our adult students who will be graduating and we have some OLC students who have and a few others that will graduate, I'm sure, hopefully many. And then that would bring all of those in and I know Ms. Winlow's talked about inviting back her students who've graduated to come back and join that group. So that's another piece of that. And then of course, the biggest piece I think is just the collaboration, the sense of a team in that building and the opportunity to do that. And as Ms. Whitaker mentioned, you know, it's, Ms. Roberts is way over there and we don't see her sometimes. And so it's nice to have her be able to come join us and be able to integrate and work with us. Sometimes we go out to the middle and high school as well and share. And I had a teacher share the other day that they're really excited about how many opportunities there have been to communicate between buildings and share. Patrice Peoples comes over and helps my staff sometimes with academic needs as far as curriculum materials at the middle school. She has those resources. And for my teachers at Engage who are starting to implement all this direct instruction, to figure out what materials they need would be another big hurdle and she has really helped to lower that hurdle a little bit and support them as they work through. And I have to say what we've asked for pretty much as far as materials and things they've been able to produce.
Ms. Briggs, before you go on, I wanted to bring up, she talked about Mrs. Tharp coming over and I wanted to express the importance of Mrs. Tharp beginning to work with our students who, who are at all facets of Eugene Field, not just Engage but OLC as well. Blaine Finch is the speaker pro tem, has been working on, so I believe it's called Work Kansas and there are five different facets of Work Kansas is. One of them is really beginning to catch up with what we have been working on in terms of workforce development here in Ottawa and Franklin, in Franklin County. A piece of this that is important to recognize as to, as to how important Mrs. Tharp and Mrs. Briggs and Mrs. Whitaker, what they're doing for, for our students is that if we can help our students identify a placement in which they begin to work, one of the things that's happening in the state of Kansas now is that if, if these students go into a work environment and continue their education beyond that, in a work environment, stay in that work environment, beyond their graduation, I think for a year, the state of Kansas will pay for it. So where we're at right now, in our normal school, the state of Kansas is taking care of this with a vast majority of CTE courses. And, and they continue to push the price of community college coursework down. So our kids are paying very little to achieve some of these things if they are students. We are now beginning to see that if we can put them in a work environment post-high school, that those same opportunities are being provided to them. So it no longer has to be, you have to be ready for it when you're in the high school. If we can help them get into a good spot, the state of Kansas is going to continue to take care of them as they learn those skill sets post-high school. So it's very important for us to make sure that we're working with our kids and job placement as they, as they finish up their high school programming.
So, moving forward, what we're looking at, so this year, we really focused on building that sense of community and then engage. And so, we want to look at next year Ottawa Learning Center specifically and continue to build in the other areas as well. Right now, and you're probably aware, Ottawa Learning Center really fulfills an opportunity for our students who are struggling at the high school to still graduate in some way, shape, or form that looks different than what they have. It addresses some of the academic needs, but we really don't look at those skills or behaviors so much there. And we need to look at those as well if we want all of our students to leave us with knowledge, skills, and behavior. So, we serve about 50 students on and off. Some of them have graduated. We have some coming in, I mean, pretty, on a pretty regular basis, somebody might be headed our way, and we work through that together. I really appreciate the collaboration with Ms. Whitaker on that. As far as we talk about those students, we support those students. We hear from the counselors ahead of time and talk about what's best for those students as far as supporting them, whether it's a blend of OHS and OLC or just coming straight over to OLC. But, it doesn't cover all the bases, and some of these students have a lot of needs in other areas. So, we want to build it so we can support those students to continue to grow in all those areas and be more successful when they leave us and not just check that box of diploma, but actually know that they're leaving us with something and moving into a career path possibly as well. One of the things I hear from a lot of our OLC students when they graduate, or they're near graduations, we have one this morning said to me, well, I've got one more class. I said, so what's the plan going forward? And some of them have one, but a lot of them don't. And sometimes, they even say, I don't even want to think about it. It's just scary. So, we need to support that piece as well and help them be ready to go forward and know that they can do it. Right now, students come in, they complete a set number of tests based on how many they need each day in order to get to their graduation goal date, and then they leave. And that's pretty much all the contact we have with some of those students. Some of them like to chat and will build relationships. Some of them are in, out, and I don't see them in the course of many days as they come and go. So, going forward, looking at our strategic plan, there's really two areas we want to really focus on, and one is that learning piece and expanding that so it covers the knowledge, the skills, and the behavior. And we have some of that, but rather than having an administrator and two aides that have varied background, what we really need to be able to deliver to our students is quality instruction and content. Even if they are on, and, you know, a Plato platform, some kind of digital platform, there are times when they need that support, especially math and the English areas. Our students often struggle with those and require a lot of support with that, and we don't always have enough people to go around. And so, shifting to, to certified teachers versus to aides, and, and then those teachers working with 10 to 20 students at a time in smaller groups, continuing to use Plato with some teacher's support, looking at specific sessions to support math and English needs. Some of these students have struggled for a while in school, and they come to us with some gaps. And especially math, you can only skip so many steps when you go up and down the staircase. Math is the same way, and we need to fill in for those steps so those students are ready to move on to whatever it is that we're giving them. We can't just push it out and say, here's your class. And so, providing more of those supports by having those people who are certified teachers who know how to teach it and fill in that background information. We have students who will say, I have one I'm working with right now, and we're working on some algebra, and I worked with him a little bit today, and he said, you know, he, he understood pretty quickly some of the skills, but didn't know what an exponent is. And that's a struggle, so knowing, oh, we need to go back and backfill and figuring out what needs to be done. We need certified teachers to be able to figure out where those gaps are and how to best fill those. And aide just isn't comfortable doing that sometimes and isn't the person to ask to do that. So, looking at that, supporting those learning styles, being perceptive of that. Again, that's something certified teachers should be more capable of doing and understanding it. Sometimes, we have to take a different approach. Just because Plato maps it out one way doesn't mean we can't teach it another way if there's another way to approach it. And then, within skills, looking at Zello, providing some more opportunities maybe for job shadowing. And again, these are things we're gonna, we would coordinate with Ms. Tharp. She has a lot of great resources and knows the community better than I do for sure. Looking at possibly student internships and then career field trips. They don't know what they don't know, and just giving them the opportunity to go out and see someone or something that they think is the job that they want or had no idea was a job at all and maybe realize that it's not the one for them or realize that, wow, this is something I never realized somebody did for a living, maybe it would work for me. So, that's another one of those areas we definitely need to continue to support. And that might be something, those field trips would be something I think we'd open up to our Engage and our OLC students at some level if we're going to do those things. And then, behavior. Right now, the high school's putting advisory into place, the middle school has an advisory, and that advisory can be a variety of things to support students. And having those two teachers, those teachers would be kind of, would be an advisor for these students and looking at not so much doing Boys Town like it looks at the elementary where there's a lot of direct instruction, planned teaching-type things or even Engage, but having discussions about those skills, what that looks like in life. Some of our students at OLC really struggle with some of those life skills. And when you get into a conflict with a person, I'm done with you. And we got to figure out, instead of being done with you, which is their mindset, how do we work through that? Talking about those things, putting those scenarios out, just having conversations about where in life would this work, getting them ready for a job. When they get frustrated at a, at a job, and we, you know, right now, at that age, a lot of them will leave or they won't go back, and that doesn't help them. So, helping support them in those areas as well. Building those relationships so they can have those conversations with that person in that time is going to be key as well. Again, Zello and career-focused guest speakers coming in during that time. Possibly setting up some community service opportunities where students can go out into the community and do some things. And then, focusing on, again, that relationship-building and connection so that when they do have a problem, they've got somebody they can come talk to. Some of these students, Ms. Tharp came in and worked with them one day and asked them to, we were talking about what are your dreams, but she started with their needs. And one of the things that came up over and over is a lot of these students said they just need someone in their court. They need someone they know they can go to, who's going to support them or give them that vote of confidence. And so, we need to try and find ways to provide that for them and those resources. Some of them have it, some of them don't. And then, that feeling of connectedness, and this is something we'd like to look at doing this year. And I know Ms. Winler had said she was looking at some different ways to do that. One of the schools we've visited had a graduate wall, and it was really motivating for us. I think it'd be motivating for the other students. Each student who graduated got a brick, and they could put a saying of some type on it. They could just sign their name. They could paint something if they were artistic. It had to be approved and school-appropriate, of course. But, offering that, our adult students were real excited as we talked about, what if we could do this? And so, we talked about taking the different portions of the building, because our programs are separated out, and finding a place for OLC going up the stairs on there and having bricks that those students could paint as a legacy that would remain. And then, over the years, that would add, and so, students could see, look how many people have done this, who have succeeded, who have graduated through this program. And same with Engage, same with the adults program. So, looking at that piece as well. So, those are some things. And then, the second area from the strategic plan that I think we still need to look at is just the whole piece of the redesign initiatives, tying into some of the things that are already happening in other buildings. Flexible scheduling. We already have a shortened day, but including that advisory period, looking at their work completion and supporting that. And maybe there's some flexibility. Maybe you need to be here longer with a teacher working in a group. Maybe they need to stay, come and go at different times. And, and having that flexibility, which I think you can do when you have a teacher who's built a relationship with the students and knows that student and has some trust to know that the student's going to follow through and hold them accountable, which is going to happen more with a certified teacher than with a para or a aide, I think. And then, continuing to have those options to travel to OHS or, well, and from OLC, it would be OHS, to participate in electives or core contact areas. I have one student in Engage who chose to take their science at OHS because they felt that the hands-on experience and having a direct instructor versus the computer-based experience was one that was going to work better for them, and she has been very successful in that class. So, that's something that every student's going to look a little different. I wouldn't want to just say we're only doing electives or we're only doing CTE at all. And then, allowing for students to work or support having a job for part of the day. Some of those students need that. They need that work experience. They may need the financial piece of it as well, and this allows for that, but supporting that as well. And then, we've also looked at and talked about looking at a soft start for OLC or Engage and both. And a soft start simply means kind of like we all go into work, and sometimes the first thing we do is get that cup of coffee or check in with somebody down the hall, you know, how was the drive-in? Allowing our students to settle in a little bit instead of walking in the room and sit down, get right to work. And that might be coming in and having a discussion with someone. It might look like having some games and puzzles and mind-type things like chess or a puzzle or Sudoku out. It could be an activity. Some of them have projects they're working on. They might pick that up and work on it for a while. But, it's just a little less regimented working in and then moving on to the work, so it gives them time to settle in. It also provides an opportunity for students to have those conversations if there has been something that went on and for teachers to figure out, maybe we need to arrange some time for the student to get some support for something that happened at home or, oh, everything blew up at work and you think you're going to lose your job. Let's see if we can help you sort that out and deal with those skills and that knowledge as it comes into play as well. So, those are things we're looking at. Building in that individual plans of study. I know that's happening at the high school right now. Some, we need to do that at OLC as well. These are students who are coming to us for a variety of reasons, and we really do need to look at their individual needs. Is this a student who has a plan to go on to, I have one right now, a couple of them now who are already in the CNA program? So, we want to make sure we're supporting them, having those conversations. What career experiences are we providing? What courses are they taking? Are they the ones they need to move them forward? So, having that opportunity to actually support those students in a way that's going to continue to build on where they're headed. Looking at their interests and goals, and again, this goes back to Zello. Some of these kids say just pull something off the top of their head sometimes because somebody asks them what they're going to do. I mean, I think of my own son who for years liked to build with Legos, so everybody's like, oh, he's going to be an engineer. Well, we spent a year in engineering. Luckily, it didn't set him back from graduation. We are in the business school, and he likes it a whole lot more, and it's meaningful. But, he just was like, everybody already told me, always told me I needed to be an engineer, and I didn't really think about my options. And so, I think making sure our students know what their options are and aren't just throwing something out there because we all expect them to know where they're going. And Zello is a great tool for that. And then, finally, the last but not least, the social-emotional well-being piece. A lot of these students have a lot of things going on in their lives, and they do not have the background to navigate it on their own. So, providing those relations and those relationships and connections, having those conversations, having somebody they can just come to that's outside of the situation, help them reflect, using Boys Town, well-managed schools, and tying them to the community with community service or service-learning projects. And even having students plan and spearhead some of those so they feel like they've accomplished something. It's huge. The back-to-the-field trips again, that would also be part of that as well. And then, just having that individualized environment where students know that somebody's there for them, which was, I mean, that was the one that hit, hit me the hardest when Ms. Tharp came over. We had kids just saying, I just need somebody in my corner. I just need somebody. So, and we want to make sure we're providing that so that they can go out in the community and maybe be somebody for somebody else someday. And that's about it. Questions?
I do just want to say one thing. I go to a league meeting every month with all the principals that are in our league, and we talk about the things that are going on at our schools. We get to ask each other questions. And one of the things that I'm the most proud about being an employee at USD 290 is that you all really allow us to provide for all of our students and to help meet the needs of all of our students. And everyone in our league is very envious of the things that we get to do with our career pathways as well as our alternative opportunities for students, because a lot of districts our size sometimes don't have these options. And these options are a large reason why our graduation rate is where it is. A lot of the reasons why I think it's going to continue to build and more importantly, allow us to help these students who truly do stay in this community to have those, the skills and the behaviors to go out and be successful and be proud about living in Ottawa. I mean, I just want you to know that because I probably get asked about our alternative options just as much as I get asked about all of our career clusters when I go to our league meetings every month. And so, we're very proud that we can offer all, everything for all of our students, and I just thank each of you for giving us that opportunity to do that for this community. You guys have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I do know that oftentimes, people from this community ask me, is there anything going on at Eugene Field? Do they even use that building? And so, now I can answer them with an emphatic yes. It's a marvelous program over there. That was, that was heartwarming to, for lack of a better word. That's exciting.
Well, and you're all welcome anytime to come over and walk through and tour the building and see what's going on there. We've invited, that's the other piece we've done, is reached out to a lot of the folks we work with in the community who touch our students' lives and ask them to come in and see what the programs are so they have a sense of what their day is as well.
Go ahead.
Do you, oh, do you have a question?
No, I was.
Oh, you're looking at Shanta, okay.
Do you have a date set yet for, for your year-end event, and will that be open for visitors?
We have not set a date, but we, I will, we can let you know, and you're certainly welcome to join us.
I'd just like to say thanks to you two ladies. I mean, I think our district is better for having you two and continuing to set the bar and just keep pushing and pushing. I have seen and heard nothing but great things this school year of how all the changes that have went on in Eugene Field. The only thing I was going to make a comment about is the brick thing. I would just worry about long-term if we had to paint or maintenance or anything. I wouldn't want somebody's name that they took so much pride in a brick getting tarnished. So, I don't know if you, I've thought of, sitting here thinking about it, I'm like, do you have them make something like, you know, when we go to anniversary parties where people sign those card things, and then we could frame it and hang it, or do one like as a class and do it? I, I would just worry over time, you know, 10, 15 years lapse, you know, how well does the ink or paint stay on that brick? And then, heaven forbid, we have a painter come in to paint, and they don't realize that they're not supposed to paint that corridor, and they paint over it all. So, I don't know. I was just trying to think outside of the box how that gets preserved long-term.
I would say one thing to our board. We are, we are blessed in this district to have really great administrators and great teachers. We have a lot of great things happening in each one of our buildings, but one of the things we have seen this year is immense growth at Eugene Field. And Mrs. Briggs has been invaluable in that her, her calmness and her demeanor, her leadership with our staff there. We have, we have teachers that feel like they're teachers at Eugene Field now because of what she's done. She's been an incredible addition to our district, and we are, we are incredibly grateful for everything that you do at Eugene Field. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I'm lucky to have a staff that is very receptive and excited to try new things.
I too want to echo that I think great things are coming out of Engage and Eugene Field, and, and I think you do have great staff here. I interact with some of the staff, and, you know, I hear what's going on, and I think that's great. I think what you presented is awesome. I know it's highly geared towards high school, but I also know we do elementary and middle school, so I don't know if that's coming down in the future, but I think that an update on what's going on with, with your lower grades would be awesome. I know you're doing terrific things there. So, I just want to point out, you're doing great things for the entire district K through 12. And we'd like to hear more about, you know, how elementary and, and the OMS is involved in Engage at some point in time. So, but, that's not a criticism, just saying it's actually a pat on the back saying, I think it'd be great to hear about that as well.
Absolutely. Thank you. We can do that.
I want to backtrack a little bit. This is a perfect example of the closed captioning argument. As Mrs. Briggs talks about Plato being used for continuing educa, or to enhance education, someone with a hearing difficulty is going to have Plato, the multiple putty.
Well, that does help me every day. Is that a problem?
Stress reliever.
We do use that in our building, but it's a little different.
Well, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for coming to present to us. Appreciate it. Okay, up next, Dr. Cobb's is going to present to the board a discussion about the remaining bond funds.
Construction first.
All right. So, a couple of things. Wow, Dean went crazy on me there. We are effectively to the end of the bond project, which is a great thing. I would tell you that in all of the construction, we came in under budget on, on every single one of those things. And for the, the greater good of the cause, the, the bond funds are expended. They are, they're down. So, Dean, if you'd scroll down there for me. If you, yep, right about there. So, if you look under column M-
So if you look under column M there, you will see that currently there is about one point seven million dollars left in, in our, in our bond fund of the original sixty-three million, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We have about one point eight million dollars left in expenditures. So remember I just said that we came in under budget and all of those things? Where we come over that is through some furniture expenditures and some other things. But the actual construction piece all came in under budget. Currently, the high school is going to come in about forty-five thousand dollars under budget and Garfield came in about seventy-five thousand dollars under budget. So both of them in really good, in really good places. So what you see up there is that currently of that about one point seven million dollars, it is going to be expended as we finish up both O H S and Garfield. If you look to the left there under column G, one of the things you'll see there is about six hundred and five thousand dollars that we gained in interest. It is not bond funds. It is money that we were able to gain off of the interest from the bond funds. We also have some reimbursements there totaling about forty-eight thousand dollars that we received back. So there's another six hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars there, giving us our, our final revenue of about two point, just under two point four million dollars. So like I said, about one point eight five of that is going to finish up what is the pre-K center at Garfield and, and O H S, leaving us with about five hundred thousand dollars of that interest money that, that we will have to consider how we want to utilize moving forward. Again, it's exciting. Five, four and a half years, five years of whatever we've been talking about the bond and we can finally say that we've kind of made it to the end. But this is, this is where we're at and, and what we see. Most of what we see with the high school, the one point seven million dollars, it's a little less than one point seven million dollars at the high school. One point three, just under one point four of that is contingency dollars. So that's been money that's been withheld as we finish those things up. So there's not still one point some odd million dollars of things left to do. That's money that we have withheld to make sure that things have happened in the, in the manner that they should have. We'll be dispersing that money here towards the end of the project as we get our actual occupancy notes and, and those types of things. Garfield is the same manner, but certainly on a much, much smaller level. Questions about bond funds?
So we have one, I guess I'm confused a little bit. We have one point seven left up there?
We have one point seven still within our budget with an expected expenditure of about one point eight left to go. So we will actually be expending more money than is in the bond proceeds. Again, that is because we purchased some furniture and some things through the years through bond funds. But we'll utilize that, that interest money to overcome some of that deficit and we'll still have about five hundred thousand dollars in interest monies as we zero out the bond budget.
So the two point three would be if we had the one point seven.
Yeah, it's the one point seven plus the six hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars.
Will be roughly like you said, five hundred thousand.
That is where we're at in terms of dollars in that account on January twentieth or something like that when we did this, knowing that we still have some expenditures left to go, including that contingency fee.
So like all constructions done. I was trying to look through this and I looked back a couple. Did we, did we hold retainage or did we pay?
We held it.
We held it? Okay. I was trying to find a line item that, because I thought we should start seeing some big ones go out.
No, and that's, that's what that is. The vast majority of that is that retain, I called it contingency.
No, I understand what you're saying.
Yep. It's the retainage. So one point four million of that is going to be retainage at the high school, which will get ready to be sent out.
Okay.
Any questions over that? I just want to kind of, it's nice to be on the verge of being done, which it's been a long time. If we could look at the capital, I wanted to bring this up. So one of the great things that happened, if you remember when we started talking about the playgrounds, we utilized some bond proceeds to pay for Garfield and Lincoln playgrounds as well as the pre-K center there. We were also going to use some of the, the roof insurance money that we got to offset the funds from the playground. The reality of it is, is that our capital budgets were healthy enough that we didn't ever have to do that. So really, all one point six million dollars of that insurance money is still sitting there. And remember that we had identified that as a conversation for what we wanted to do with a turf project at O H S with both football and soccer field. So when you start thinking about the one point six million that exists there within our capital budget that does not impact, if you see the highlighted four point three million, if you subtract the one point six from there, you still have about a two and a half million dollar capital budget, which is where we want to be. Leaves us with a very healthy capital budget. But if you take that one point six million and you also add the other five hundred thousand dollars of interest money that we have, we really have just over two million dollars to make sure that we can do a turf project right if that's where we want to go as a board. We've had lots of conversations about turf. We've held off to make sure that we finish this project the way that we should without anything jumping up and saying, oh, my God, we, we still need to accomplish this. Like I said, it's effectively over with now and, and we're, we're fairly positive that we won't have of any of those things. So I wanted to let you know where we're at with the capital budget as well as where we're at with the bond budget so that as we get ready for a conversation about what's next, we know exactly where we stand. Okay? Questions over bond or capital budgets? Yes, sir.
So would we, do we have factored in here, would we factor in the Lincoln lot sale as some of that money to use or?
It's, I think it's actually in there someplace.
I'm just asking, would we add?
There's, yeah, there's still another seventy-five thousand dollars from the Lincoln lot plus more, possibly more money coming in down the road if we do not utilize the
I was just trying to add up all the monies.
We've got some money there as well. Okay? Questions over that?
I like keeping the conservative position, two and a half million. I think that's something that we've got to maintain.
Our, our capital budget is very healthy. And again, we can do something with, with turf at, at both soccer and football without touching any of the rest of that capital, remaining with a two and a half million dollar capital budget, which would be a really significant, I think, statement for our district in maintaining what our community just paid for. Because we have really great facilities. Part of what we'll need to utilize that capital money for is to maintain great facilities, making sure our parking lots, making sure that we're painting, making sure our carpets, all of those things remain top notch moving forward so that twenty years down the road, we're not doing wholesale renovations on bridges.
I like seeing that list in the corner.
Okay? Any questions there? Okay, I'll just stand here while you do board reports. Otherwise, I'm going to sit down and I'm going to come back. Did you have a, Susan, did you have a question?
No, it's all good news.
Okay, yes, it is good news.
And thank you for putting that together for us so we could see a summary that was really helpful. Terry, thank you for putting that, working on that too. So, so we are going to move to board reports. It's a time where any board members that have gone and represented the board in any meetings or functions can report on that if anyone has anything.
Eighth grade spelling bee at O M S. That's the last, uh, last Thursday, I think it was, maybe Thursday or Friday?
Yeah.
I did the sunflower spelling bee. I pronounced the words. Only messed up once.
Melidia attended along with Linda, myself, the new board member training. It was a day long up in Topeka. So that was good, good time to always learn something new.
There was also, I know Linda attended legislative, legislative coffee on Saturday, which was an interesting conversation amongst our, our legislators, to say the least.
And Linda and I both attended the chamber.
Yeah.
The chamber recognition ceremony that they had and, and sat at the two ninety table for that. And, and Dr. Cobb, share with us our two ninety winner of the smile award.
Yeah, so we, we had the opportunity to surprise two members. I don't know who did the, the actual nomination, but Todd Miller, who is the, the crossing guard, one of the crossing guards for Lincoln, and his wife, Jeannie is the library aide at, at O H S and O M S. But somebody nominated Todd for the smile award. And ultimately, what the smile award is, is somebody within the community that builds, builds goodwill through their smile, that people love to see. Obviously, he sees a lot of people coming into.
And he waves at every single one. It's amazing.
He's, he's an incredible guy. He had no idea that he was receiving an award. And I don't know how you don't.
He just came to the banquet.
You don't ask questions like, why did I get invited to the banquet? But he was there and he was excited to have dinner with us.
Having a good time.
And, and it was funny to watch when they said, this person stands at the corner of Milner and wherever, he started looking around like, what, that's where I, and then they said his name. He, he got a big grin on his face and smiled and I think was very humbled that he was recognized for, for doing what he does. But he's an incredible, he's an incredible guy and, and we're certainly happy to, to have him greet our kids every day when they come.
Well, and somebody, somebody, someone from the community said that they changed the way they drive to work just so they can drive by and see him every day.
And on top of that, Mr. Interest sent out an email to all of the Lincoln families telling us about that and asking us to yell, open our windows this morning and congratulate him. And my, my middle school daughter, when I told them, I'm like, oh, my goodness, guys, listen, she was bummed. She was like, but I don't, we always go to the middle school first. She was like, but I can't be there. Can we go a different route? Like, that's how much of an impact it made.
He's an incredible guy. And we're, again, we're lucky to have both of them, Todd and, and Jeannie, in our U S D two ninety family. They're incredible people.
Absolutely.
That was good. That was, it was, it was a good time and it was really neat to, to get to see him be so surprised.
Yeah.
All right, so you're already there, so take us into the policy update first read.
Hey, welcome back to policy season. The good thing about policy season this year is there's one policy and it's not eighty pages worth of, of policy updates. This one is very simple. Yeah. This one is very simple. We updated this policy last June as well. One of the things, and, and this is really the, the change in the policy, they've taken out, they've taken out banks and loans or, or savings institutions and put in financial institutions. So really, you have the opportunity now to utilize any financial institution to, to deal with your investment funds. The only time that we deal with investment funds is really with bond dollars. So this is not something that happens in, in our district very often, but it is, it is something that we do. And this policy was one that was updated off of, off of their expectations and, and desires last year will certainly worthwhile doing again. Really, again, the only thing that it, it gives latitude on is that we don't have to go through a bank. We can go through any financier at this point. So. Any questions about that? You can read the red line policies and see all of the fun in it. And that's it. Next time we will, we'll make the motion to adopt if the, if the board sees fit.
All right, let's move on to section six point oh two, finance group determination.
Okay, we have been talking about Raymond James and what used to be Piper Jaffray and now is Piper Sanders, I think, for, it seems like six months now. So I want to make sure that we recognize what it is that we are, we are discussing here. This is not a, a board decision to fi, to refinance today. The, the conversation that we're having is simply about which group we want to utilize to discuss a refinance. Once that determination is made, there are several steps that the board still has to be a part of before we, before we do anything else. One of which would, we would bring back whichever group and they would give us specifics on what a refinance would look like. So as they set up here and talk, they could only give us vague impressions of where the market was at and what particular bonds. Neither one of them had the rights to put our bonds out there to see what the market would be for them specifically. So when we make that decision, whatever it is, we then give them the authority to go out, take a look at what those bonds would do on the market, come back, talk about what a plan would look like for us. We would actually have to make a resolution to do some things. At that point, we determine whether or not we're ready to refinance or not ready to refinance. And still, there are some things that, that they would have to do with this board before we make any determinations. In the end, as we get through, if we decide at some point in time to refinance with either one of these groups, what we would look for is giving them the authority to make the decision as we go through and say, yes, we're ready to refinance. Here are the ones that we want to refinance. These are not coming due until this time, so we want to leave those alone, whatever it happens to be. But then when the market is right, they, they do what we asked them to do to begin with, without having to come back for us to approve it right off the bat because we've already given them the notion of what we want to accomplish. So that's kind of where we're at with this. Again, the purpose for tonight is just choosing one of those entities to come back and further explore where we want to go with a refinance. Okay? Any questions about either one of them? I can tell you that my recommendation, if you're interested, would be to continue to use Greg Varnberg, who's done amazing things with us. Greg was the, the financier through Piper Jaffray when we went through this bond process and, and did a great job with our, with our district and knows us well. He's certainly a very intelligent man in the, in the marketplace and probably in a lot of other areas as well. But I think Terry and I both feel the most comfortable with Greg working with us in terms of a refinance.
So Madam President, I move that we appoint Raymond James and Greg Varnberg as the company to manage our bond refinance.
Is there any discussion before we ask for a second?
I just had a quick question. I notice neither one of them talked about their fees. I'm assuming the two of you've talked to them about their fees. Okay, and I'm sure there's a reason they didn't want to come right out and say their fees in public, but it's one percent.
It's, and it's the same for both groups.
There you go. Just making sure.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes seven oh. And move, move on to six, six point oh three, the calendar presentation.
All right.
And we are taking action on this calendar tonight.
We've also talked about the calendar a lot of times. So I don't know that there's a whole lot of need for discussion. My recommendation would be that we adopt calendar one, but certainly if there's any discussion that we need to have, we would, we would do so.
I just have one question on calendar one. So we're starting, what, almost a week earlier?
A day earlier.
Day earlier, okay.
Yep.
Never mind.
The normal start date would be the tenth. If, if we rolled the calendar over to, to this year, normal start date would be on the Monday. It rolls it back.
Because I was trying to, with some of the days we added in negotiations, I was trying to figure out where the, I knew some of them came off P D days, right? And I was trying to figure that out because my daughter's birthday is the fifteenth of May and I know she always gets out right around there, so.
Yep. So the, the two days that we added, one comes at the, at the very beginning on the seventh. The other one would be at the very end in May, which was, shows up on the fourteenth. Yep.
Thank you.
Didn't, didn't the kids return to school this year on the nineteenth?
No.
Uh, it would have, possibly, but it would have, the rollover calendar would have had them going back to school on the, on the fourteenth. They typically go back on a Friday. They usually go a half day and then come back the following week. I don't remember exactly what our calendar looked like at the beginning of the year.
Dean's loving this website.
I, I, for me, I, I'm not going to really spend a lot of time tonight, I guess. I frankly, I'm going up staying because I, I don't know that I like either calendar, but I haven't really figured out what we could do to change it. And I've heard discussion going both ways. I do agree with calendar number two presents a huge problem going over into the next semester with that. But I do think that we're starting awful early. And so, you know, I just, as we move forward, you know, I think the option number two really wasn't an option, especially when you heard the feedback that was provided to us and by talking to people, that with that rollover to the first week of the next semester. So I think just in the future, it'd be nice if we presented options that were really valid. So that's my two cents.
I would just tell you, the other league schools all start before us.
Okay.
So, I mean, we have an understanding that we start early. The other league schools all start ahead of us.
I would agree with, with Harold that I would like to see next year, two options that the teachers would be able to consider better. I think some of them liked the, this, a lot of them actually liked the second calendar, I think some of them liked, a lot of them actually liked the second calendar, but didn't really feel that it was a viable option. I would agree with that. And I feel that we owe them a viable option or don't give them an option.
I guess I would also remind the board that you are in charge of the calendar and it's not a negotiated item, nor do teachers have a say in the calendar. We provide them the opportunity to give us a say in the calendar, provide something that's best for them. The second calendar was built directly off of teacher input. So when you talk about it not being a viable option, it was built based off of what the teachers wanted to see. When you put it out there to the remainder of the staff, it obviously became something that was very split between middle school and elementary schools. So depending on how you want to associate with a viable option, again, the calendar was built specifically off of recommendations that teachers provided to me as a second option. And when you put it back out there to teachers, it then became something that was notable specifically at the secondary level that was probably not a very viable option for them at that point in time. But again, the calendar, we need to remember, is a board function. Board sets the calendar, it is your task to create a calendar that you see fit for our district and is not a negotiable item for teachers. We have tried in a number of ways to give them input and insight as to the development and creation of the calendar, but it is your calendar.
Anybody would like to make a motion at this time?
So make a motion, we accept calendar one.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Abstention? Are you abstaining?
Yep, I'm abstaining.
Alright, so that passes six one. And we are down to personnel. We do need to have an executive session tonight for personnel. We need to meet for about twenty minutes and we will be inviting Dr. Cobb's, Mr. Robinson and Mrs. Bybee if somebody would like to read the recommended action statement for coma.
I move that the board go into executive session to discuss personnel matters pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under coma and that the open meeting shall resume at twenty fifty, eight fifty in the boardroom. We invite Mr. Robinson, Mrs. Bybee and Dr. Cobb's.
So a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Pass the seven oh. I am, I'll tell you what. Yes, go ahead, did you make a? Susan, did you make a motion?
But you don't want to, if you don't want to rush, that's fine.
Did you make the motion? Is there a second?
I second that motion.
All in favor, raise your right hand, hands up.
Oh, yes, yes.
Passes seven oh, we are back into session. Alright, you've all been presented a personnel report, is there a motion to approve such report?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes seven oh as well, and we are down to announcements.
Alright, so we have a number of announcements, some of them I'm sure I've missed as we've made this migration. It's hard to see everybody's calendars anymore. Dean's gonna do great things for me over there. But we have been visiting alternative programs, we've seen a lot of them. And there are a couple of things that I want to just, one is how good ours is and maybe how poor some other people's are and how we still have some room to get much better. So we'll continue to do that. There is a scholarship and pathways parent meeting at OHS on Wednesday at six thirty. Mrs. Tharp is running that one. Chris asked earlier when the musical is, it starts on Thursday, it goes Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday?
Sunday just is now canceled.
Sunday is?
Because we were able to get out of our contract.
Okay. Good enough, so Friday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, all at seven o'clock. Winter royalty is the following week, so you will see all of the winter royalty fund coming up with. Yeah, there's the assembly on Friday, but then the following week is all of the winter royalty pride stuff to wear your red shirt and whatever days that you guys have going on. And then the game will take place next Friday. There's an incoming freshman meeting on the twenty ninth at seven o'clock. Garfield Family Night is tomorrow, it's K through three, starts at six o'clock. Math cadre is meeting in here on Thursday at three forty-five. We also know that the Wax Museum is taking place at Lincoln on Wednesday, so you can go by and see it during the day. It's pretty awesome stuff if you've never been to one before, I think that's what we got, Shannon.
Is it in the afternoon?
Yep.
Alright, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Don't have to ask me twice.
Pass the seven oh.